Give me a text.
I'll let you know.
Are we on? Welcome to Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2011. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Report regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 14th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Can you all please join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be accepted. And can I get motion to approve minutes?
So move.
Okay.
Second, sorry.
Thank you. So, the minute has been approved. I do not have any oral communication cards, so we'll go right into the cases here. The oil business, we have draft North Glendale Community Plan and related entitlements, including alternative zoning, and this has been continued from August 17th, and I think we'll continue it again.
Yes, Chairman, members of the commission, we're requesting that this item be scheduled to a special planning commission meeting on October 17th at 5:30 in Municipal Services Building Room 105, without further public notice.
And this is, we can have all five members here?
Yes, that's our understanding, as everybody so far has said they would be available that date.
So can I get a motion and a support?
I move that we continue the draft North Glendale Community Plan and the related guidelines and amendments, text and map amendments, to October 17th, without further notice.
Second.
Okay, well, motion and support. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Landrigan.
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Isaien.
Yes.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye. Order of three to zero. It has been continued for this certain October 17th, 2011. The next item is Glendale Municipal Code Amendment Case Number PZON 2011-003 regarding signs citywide. And Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Chairman, members. I'd like to have for you some amendments to the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Some amendments to the sign ordinance, Chapter 12 of the municipal code, and a recommendation to go to City Council. Now, I should point out to you that I'm going to pass out to you a revised version of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Most of the changes to this ordinance are, compared to the copy that you have, are not substantive. Their grammar, their stylistic. I'll draw your attention to a few of the substantive things as I go through my presentation.
Stephanie, could you turn on the projector, please?
City Council authorized us to work on this ordinance back in March, and since then, a group of staff have been working diligently trying to bring this forward in a format that meets the interests of the business community and the staff's sort of ability to manage the ordinance. We've been struggling quite a bit with the many competing interests involved here, but we think we finally got into a version that we can both enforce and that will also serve the purposes of the business community. It's worth pointing out that Glendale essentially since 1956 and probably ever has never allowed portable signs by right, you know, as a legal matter in the city. Nevertheless, merchants have had them in various forms, you know, all over the, in many parts of the city. We're trying to respond to the concerns of a variety of the business community, and as part of that, we've gone out and spoken to several merchants associations, Montrose, Kenneth Village, Adams Square, Spar Heights, and Downtown, to get their feedback on what should be in the ordinance, how they'd like it to work. Our intention is that pedestrian signs should only be located in pedestrian-oriented parts of the city. How do we define that? Areas that have more of a village quality or that are really designed to attract high numbers of pedestrians. And that's why we did focus on these five merchants association areas. Kenneth Village definitely has that pedestrian-oriented feel. Montrose, certainly. Adams Square, we believe, also. Spar Heights and Brand Boulevard area and some portions of, some other portions of Downtown. For purposes of clarity, we've decided that it should be limited to areas of the city that have city-supported merchants associations or that are in the Downtown specific plan area. We could not really differentiate subparts of Downtown. We just proved to be unworkable, essentially. So that's why we've said one of the merchants association areas or in the DSP. So let me get into some of the details of what the ordinance would involve. It would require an annual city permit to be administered by the city engineer's office through Public Works Department. The permit would cost $100 and be renewed annually. The signs would only be allowed on public right-of-way, as I mentioned, within these recognized merchants associations or in the Downtown specific plan zone. It would only allow A-frame style signs, a maximum of four feet tall and 30 inches wide. Why was that? We discussed some other options for signs, but we felt like, for purposes of aesthetics and for purposes of ease of enforcement and for purposes of reducing, avoiding safety hazards from taller signs, we wanted to limit, we should limit the signs to this style, relatively low A-frame style signs. We, the proposed regulation only allows one sign per business, per ground floor businesses. So if you've got an upstairs business, you would not be allowed to have a sign. The sign can be, the sign face can be changed periodically without requiring a new permit. We have decided that they could have chalkboards, a chalkboard sign, which is common at restaurant, for restaurants and things like this, but not a dry erase board. Again, for purposes of aesthetics, we just, and we heard some feedback from the merchants on this also, that some of them also felt that dry erase boards just was not a quality looking enough sign to allow in this, in this manner. In order to ensure that the signs maintain their appearance over some period of time, we're recommending that the, that the frame be either powder coated metal, aluminum, or an outdoor grade wood. Again, for purposes of aesthetics, we're not recommending plastic frames, we're prohibiting plastic frame signs, which is in some ways some of the more common types, but we just don't think that they, that they look good enough to be on the streets of Glendale. We think that they could only, should only be displayed during the hours of operation of the business, so they'd have to be taken in at night, mostly. They'd be prohibited, and this is key, they'd be prohibitive if a business is separated from the sidewalk by a parking area. So if you've got a mini mall and your business is set back from the sidewalk and separated from the sidewalk by parking, you don't get a series of signs out on the sidewalk. Signs would be out on the, on the right-of-way, but they cannot be within 24 inches of the back of the curb. That is different than in the version that went to you, which just said 18 inches. City engineer recommended this just the other day. The signs could not be attached to anything in the roadway, in, anything in the right-of-way, and they could not block pedestrian or vehicular traffic or create sight visibility or any other hazard. They'd have to maintain a continuous through path of four feet. Applicants are going to be required to provide a site plan and a series of photographs to demonstrate that the sign location won't block pathways, won't be attached to anything, and otherwise will meet the intent of the ordinance. Applicants will have to provide proof of $1 million of liability insurance at the time of application, just as we require for sidewalk dining. And then signs would have to be removed by the city for any sort of sidewalk maintenance or including cleaning operations. We've got some visual examples we're going to include in, we've included in the draft ordinance of sign with a nice wood frame, an A-frame sign with a nice wood frame, and then here's one with a metal frame, and we're noting that the sign face could be, you know, painted, or it can be the chalkboard. They could have a removable sign face, an alternate, you know, sign face that they change from time to time, and they would not need, as I mentioned earlier, to get a new permit. These are the kinds of signs that would be prohibited. White frame, plastic, plastic frame or metal frame even, but with individual letters. So individual letters, like you would see on, like, a gas station marquee or a movie marquee, those would not be permitted. Compared to the version of the ordinance that was sent out to you, I've simplified the definition of pedestrian sign, so it doesn't refer to, it doesn't refer to areas of this, oh, and the type of advertisement it would carry or anything like that. We don't specify that for other types of signs. We just say it's a portable sign that may be permitted in certain parts of the city. We're keeping, changing the definition to be a little bit simpler. And as I pointed out earlier, we've changed this, the guideline of where it can be located so it's no closer than 24 inches, 24 inches to the curb rather than 18. Also, as a late change, we've included explicitly in the ordinance the requirement for the $1 million of liability insurance, whereas in your version, it was intended to be handled by the application process and not just, not actually mentioned in the ordinance. Okay, so the city engineer has passed me a note saying it could be either, he's recommending that it could be either 18 inches from the back of the curb or 24 inches from the face of the curb. Perhaps, Rubik, you could come up and explain the difference, because it's not obvious to me what the difference would be.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Rubik Glunden, city engineer. The intention was to have 24 inch clearance from the face of the curb, and typically 99% of the cases are, curbs are six inches wide. So I thought, in my personal opinion, that's easier for the business owners to measure from the face of the curb as opposed to trying to find where the back of the curb is. So that's.
Oh, just for clarification. It should be exactly the same.
Should be exactly the same.
Thank you. That completes my summary of the, of the ordinance. I can go over any more details that you want. I can answer any questions that you want. Like, as I mentioned in the staff report, we did reach out to the various merchants associations. We provided notice to them for tonight's meeting and to the chambers, and to the chambers of commerce. I've received one comment from a member of the public about this, other than in those organizations, and that was a person who was disappointed he might not get a sign on Central, but now with the new revision that we've got where it would be allowed all throughout the DSP, he would actually get a sign. So that's where we stand.
I'm just curious how, when you mentioned you reached out to the merchants association, what does that mean? Do you talk to, do you present to the whole association?
We held individual meetings with each one of them. We went, we went to Kenneth Village, and we met with, and we organized it through the president, and he advertised it amongst the merchants, and I think we had 10 or 12 of those merchants show up. We went to Montrose, and we had fewer than 10, five or seven merchants show up there. Adams Square, we met with a few merchants there, but the same process. We, we organized through the, through the president or whoever the organizing body was, advertised it and invited their comments. And in general, they were supportive of what we were doing. They didn't have any, there was some debate about what the fee should be. There was some debate about A-frame only or other types, but there was no, there was no strong opposition or feeling about that. In general, they were supportive of the idea that A-frame might be the best choice for both appearance sake and for safeties, for safety reasons.
You mentioned it was like a city council initiative of this, or was that initiated by the merchants for, to have something like?
Well, I, my understanding of the way it worked was the merchants raised significant concerns about this. Council heard those concerns, and then essentially they directed us to proceed.
Mr. Landrigan, before I ask you to speak, I do not have any speaker cards up here, so if you're here to speak on these cases, please fill them out.
There's one other thing I would point out. Normally, an ordinance would take effect 30 days after introduction, after adoption by council, but in this case, because we're also going to have a new set of fees, the ordinance would not take effect, we're proposing that it not take effect, take effect until 60 days after, so it would take effect at the same time as the fees would.
Mr. Landrigan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask you two questions. One is, is there an appeal process?
No, there is no appeal process. For the city, for city engineers' decisions for items in the public right-of-way, there is no appeal process. Now, on the signs that could be allowed on private property, their appeal process essentially would be if they were rejected by the city engineer, then they could apply for a variance from sign regulations through the zoning administrator, through the planning hearing officer.
Is there a lottery where there are multiple frontage businesses?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, well, every frontage that meets this definition has the right to pay the fee and put a sign out.
Yes, but it does say explicitly in the ordinance that you're allowed one sign period. So if you've got a site that has three frontages, you're a corner lot, end lot, you have the choice of which frontage, but you only get one sign.
All right, and then if, there's nothing in here as to, well, it indicates right-of-way, but it doesn't indicate clutter. So that if you have street furniture, and you have street lighting, and you might have a water hydrant, and you might have a bike rack, to me, I think there needs to be some direction. I understand that you're going to ask for a plan, but to me, it seems there needs to be some direction as to appropriateness of placement within that kind of street furniture environment.
This is my, we've discussed this to a certain extent at staff. It's our feeling that if there really is that amount of items on a sidewalk, it might very well be very hard to meet the four-foot clearance requirement to maintain your pathway. And if you're, and if, and if you can't do that, then you don't get a sign. And they have to demonstrate that as part of their application process. Now, if they can demonstrate 24 inches from the face of the curb, not attached to anything, and a four-foot clear pathway, now, I'm willing to entertain any improvements that you could offer, but.
I know, I, I just walk a lot, walk around things a lot, that's why I ask. The other question I have is, so if there's a violation and the sign is, so to speak, removed, and is there, and are, if it's moved, if you have a corner lot and you, say you're going to put it in one place and you put it in some other place, and so the city removes the sign, is the merchant allowed to put it back out again without any consequence?
Well, I, we've discussed this with Sam Engel, who's our code enforcement officer, and his process would be the same for any other sign. There wouldn't be immediate removal unless there was a true safety hazard. There would be a discussion with the, with the property owner about what the, what the regulations are, an attempt to gain compliance cooperatively, and then it might be escalated. Removal would be either a last resort if there was an imminent safety hazard. If there was removal, then they would be subject to potential citation or fine if they put it back out in the same place again, presumably. But we're hoping, I mean, based on our experience with, Sam's experience with Montrose shop owners and whatnot, generally they gain compliance once they have a discussion with the, with the property owner.
So with the issuance of a permit, will the rules that Neighborhood Services typically use as to determine this kind of violation and the consequences be distributed at the same time as the permit?
Oh, of course, yes, yes. I mean, that's, that would be our intent. We haven't worked out all the mechanics of the application and permit issuance process yet, but that would certainly be the intent.
Thank you, Ms. Landrigan. I just have a general comment on your definition. You have flashing sign, an illumination sign, you know, LED signs are very, I guess, widely used these days, and, you know, sometimes it's in its own category. What does that fall into?
We deal with illuminated and, and animated signs and flashing signs separately. Flashing signs, animated signs are prohibited. So if you attempted to have animation or flashing lights or anything like that as part of your pedestrian sign, that's not, that's not going to work. And I don't think, I don't think we need a separate, to separately deal with that as part of this pedestrian sign ordinance, because we already explicitly prohibit them as a category unto themselves.
But if you, if you have a portable illuminator and you put it on there, that's not in violation of the sign. You can't illuminate it so that it can be read or not tripped over in the dark.
One of the provisions of the ordinance is you can't have any illumination of the sign at all. You can't shine a light on it and, you know, attach anything to the, it can't be internally illuminated, it can't have a light intentionally shining on it, set up like that. It's just, it's just supposed to be a non-illuminated A-frame sign.
Okay.
And we're trying, we're trying to keep this, these definitions and the rules as straightforward as possible, because we're cognizant of the fact that, you know, Rubik and his, and his staff are the ones going to be administering this for the most part, and this is going to be a challenge. It's going to be difficult, so we're trying to keep it so understandable for them also, as well as our merchants.
I don't see any public comment card, speaker card here, so I guess with the clarification of engineers' comments about 24 inches versus 18 inches from the curb, are we ready to make a?
Motion.
Motion.
I was trying to find them.
It's at the back, it's right there.
Oh. I don't think I have it. So, all right. So we're going to make that change to the 14, or to 24 inch?
Just clarification, 18 and 24.
We don't have to put it in the motion, right? Yeah. Okay. So I move that upon consideration of the proposed ordinance to allow pedestrian signs on the public right-of-way and on private property, and the proposed amendments to Titles 12 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995. The Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments.
Second.
Yeah, wait, motion and seconds. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Order of three to zero. The sign ordinance, I mean, has been recommended that we adopt public-private signs. Next item is new business statutory development agreement to implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee, the early payment option. And we have 320 through 324 North Central Avenue, 208 West Lexington Drive, and 317 through 345 North Orange Street. It's called Lexon Orange Park. And we have Mr. Kraus.
Tim Foye was going to say something about the DA's initially, and then I'll give my presentation. As was detailed in the staff report, these development agreements that you're going to be considering tonight, and you'll see a few more of them in the coming weeks, are not typical development agreements. Most development agreements that you do see relate to development of a building and its design and generally considered when you're considering the land use entitlements. And typically, what they will do is provide, so to speak, a quid pro quo. A developer will usually ask for some special consideration from the city, such as vesting other rules currently in place, so they are protected from any future zone changes, and in exchange, there are some public benefits that the city receives from the development going forward. That is still the case here with this development agreement, but it's much more narrowly focused in terms of only the payment of, early payment of Parks and Library impact fees. So some of the projects you'll see tonight and in the weeks to come are seeking entitlements through a different track, or in fact have already been entitled and are about to submit for building permits. So the development agreements here are very unusual in that they're focused very specifically on just the issue of the early payment of Parks and Library impact fees.
And that's what we're deciding on today, is the early payment of the.
You're making a finding that it is still consistent with the general plan.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think what Mr. Foye is gently trying to say, that as tempting as it might be, we request that you resist discussing anything beyond what the focus of the development agreement is.
Not to discuss the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to City Council regarding the proposed development agreement to implement Parks and Library Development Impact Fee early payment option for the Lexit Orange mixed-use residential project located at 320 through 324 North Central Avenue, 208 West Lexington Drive, and 317 and 3 through 345 North Orange Street, which is within the Orange Central District of the Downtown specific plan. The proposed development consists of 307 residential dwelling units and three live-work units and two buildings located on two separate parcels referred to as Parcel A and Parcel B. Parcel A fronts Central Avenue is proposed to include a five-story building with 106 residential dwelling units and three live-work units and 147 parking spaces. Parcel B fronts Orange Street and Lexington Drive and is proposed to include a five-story building with 204 residential units and 362 parking spaces. The two buildings would be connected by a pedestrian bridge that's located over the existing public alley. On July 19th, 2011, the City Council approved modifying the fee payment procedure to allow applicants to pay the full fee amount at the time of plan check submittal at the current rate. The City Council further directed staff to process statutory development agreements for those projects wishing to lock in the 2011 rates and pay the entire fee at plan check submittal in exchange to waiving their rights to request a refund for any reason. The proposed development agreement requires the developer to pay the full fee prior to December 31st, 2011, at the time of plan check submittal, and specifies that the developer has waived its rights to request a fee rebate after payment. Excuse me. The DA allows developers to submit a minimum for foundation-only permit by December 31st, 2011, to qualify for the reduced fee, thereby vesting the project. If the developer allows the plan check or building permit to expire, the developer will require to pay the new plan check and building permit fees. The DA implements only those provisions necessary to implement the fee payment structure. The DA vests the billing to, the right to build the project under the current. with project stage-two design submittal, final EIR, and the development agreement. The council hearing date has been scheduled for, technically, scheduled for October 11, 2011. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the proposed development agreement for the Lexon Orange project located at 320 through 324 North Central Avenue, 208 West Lexington Drive, and 317 through 345 North Orange Street, which is within the Orange Central District of the downtown specific plan. Prior to its consideration by the council, as discussed in the staff report, staff believes that the necessary findings can be made for this development agreement. The Planning Commission comments and recommendations will be presented to the City Council along with project stage-two design submittal, final EIR, and the development agreement. The council hearing date has been scheduled for, technically, scheduled for October 11, 2011. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the proposed development agreement for the Lexon Orange project located at 320 through 324 North Central Avenue, 208 West Lexington Drive, and 317 through 345 North Orange Street. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Will the environmental review come back to us when it's final? We have no action on the environmental review today.
You wouldn't have an action on it today, but you could make comments or recommendations to City Council on the EIR.
May I make a question on that? In the very last page, you mention the environmental review, and it indicates the DEIR identifies for significant and unavoidable impacts that cannot be mitigated to a level less than significant, which include both the project and cumulative air quality impacts related to construction. So, but there are mitigation measures in there. And it says, "Project and cumulative public service, library, and recreation impacts associated with increased demand for the facilities and cumulative solid waste impacts with the landfill capacity." So my question is, is does the agreement take into account this DEIR finding?
Members of the Planning Commission, Jillian Van Miden, City Attorney's Office. The problem that we have currently is our planning standard for parks and recreation is extremely stringent, and there are not really any larger residential projects, regardless of the payment of a fee, whether it was... And our fees right now are not the full impact fee that was recommended by the Nexus study when we adopted it. We aren't close to that point yet. So what we are... It is cognizant of that because we know we couldn't reach it even with the payment of the increased fee after the end of the year. And so, and also in light of the fact that with the changes in redevelopment law, we had additional set aside from tax increment generated by residential and commercial projects to try to backfill that amount. But that amount is also not now available due to the stay that we are under in the expenditure of redevelopment tax increment funds. So we are therefore sort of forced or cornered into a position of having to make significant unavoidable impact findings for recreation based on the planning standard that we have at this time, which is six acres per thousand residents. And we are commencing a look at updating our planning standard to see whether it is still an accurate standard for the City of Glendale and other similar municipal areas, which might, in fact, change this impact area. So it's a long answer to a short question, which is, no, it won't. We have taken into consideration, if we're close enough to making a difference for us and avoiding that impact, I don't think you would see this recommendation from staff that we allow the developer to pay the entire fee upfront. As Mr. Foy mentioned, the quid pro quo, what we're getting is the full fee upfront, which places the Parks and Libraries in a better position to fund their capital improvement programs that are part of being able to mitigate some of these impacts. So we have taken into consideration, and there's really a broader range of issues impacting this. But this allows us to collect those fees sooner rather than later. The fee ordinance, as it is drafted currently, is 50% at the time of plan check submission and then the other half at the time of certificate of occupancy. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Ms. Van Miden.
It sort of does. But it was... Thank you. Now, my second question is, is that once we take the fee in, is there... Since we're taking the whole fee in as opposed to the partial fee as... Because of the agreement, what does the city do with that fee? Does it put that fee into an actual account until the actual project is built? And then it would accumulate interest? Or is it going to be used as-is without accumulating interest? How are we going to... I mean, my question is, I think the development agreement is reasonable and should be of the highest consideration here. But to me, it seems that by taking this in, we're putting ourselves in a beneficiary position that isn't addressed for our actions as the city when we receive this in whole instead of part.
The, under AB 1600, and the development impact fees are required by statute to be deposited into a segregated account. They must be accounted for on an annualized basis, and they must be used within five years for the adopted capital improvement program for parks and libraries and recreation. So that is how those funds are accounted for. The target of those CIP programs are for the hardest-hit areas, and those are the underserved areas in southern Glendale and surrounding the downtown where we're seeing new and more intensive residential development. So that's how that works. It's statutorily required to be in a segregated fund, and that interest is earned on that money. If the money is not used for those programs within five years, it's required to be refunded statutorily.
But our development agreement says that we will not refund it. So are we in conflict with that state law?
If we don't use it, we are required to refund it. But we... Our ordinance has a refund option, and so under our ordinance, we would not be honoring a request for a refund. But if we couldn't use the money by the end of five years, we'd be required to statutorily refund it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This fund that it all goes to, is it mixed with other development fees or is it just separate for this?
It has to be entirely segregated from other fees. There's no co-mingling with other sources of funds because the funds must statutorily be directed towards those projects that are identified in the CIP for parks, recreational libraries.
Can I ask one more question? Is there... You know, this is a multi-family, dense development. Is there a requirement that it benefit this requirement or within an area of this requirement? Or are the funds able to be floated as needed?
There isn't a one-for-one requirement specified in the statute. The statute generally specifies that the city have an adopted recreational master plan or CIP. And as I previously stated, the CIP focuses on the high-need areas. We know that residents in Glendale and from people outside travel throughout Glendale to get to those parks and recreational areas that serve their needs. And so it isn't therefore necessary that a park or recreational facility be built, legally required that it be built on a, within a certain radius.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah. The project does mention that as 10% of the site has open space and 50% is usable to general public. Wait, I couldn't figure out, looking at the plan, which part that was.
I believe you are getting into the discussion that goes beyond the scope of what's in front of you. And if you would like, we would be happy to explain that to you after the meeting.
It would be a lot less tempting to ask if there isn't so much information.
Thank you very much, and I... And we will be happy to answer your questions after the meeting.
There's even styles of fonts.
Yeah, for the sake of moving the project along, because we do have quite a few cases, why don't we reserve our questions for, you know, later time, if you don't mind?
That's fine.
Okay. Any more questions on the development agreement here? Any additional comments?
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Then I think this is pretty straightforward. I'm looking for motion.
I will move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council the approval of the development agreement as presented to us in Resolution Number 2011-002 and all of the sections noted, rather than read the two pages.
Second.
Yeah, we'll motion and support. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan.
Aye.
Yes, Cyan.
Yes.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye. So with the vote of three to zero, the statutory development agreement to implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee early payment option has been recommended on project Lexon Orange. Next case is statutory development agreement to implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee early payment option on 300 North Central Avenue, which is the legendary Tower Glendale project. And we have Mr. Kiesel.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members. As you mentioned, the next item before you this evening is the statutory development agreement to implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee early payment option for the development of the Legendary Towers Glendale. This project is located at 300 North Central Avenue. Even though you're not allowed to talk about it, I want to give you a brief overview of the project. The site is 27,500 square feet approximately. It's located on the northeast corner of Central Avenue and California Avenue. The property is currently vacant, and what is proposed is 72-unit condominium development with eight ground-floor live-work units and a corner café. It's a modern, contemporary-style building. It's six stories high and 80... Six stories and 80 feet in height. Unlike the previous project, the project has received final entitlements from the City Council Redevelopment Agency in March of this year. Four years ago, the council adopted, and this may be a little bit repetitive, so you can stop me if you don't want to hear it again. Council adopted the ordinance allowing the city to implement or impose development impact fees for developing new or rehabilitating parks, recreational facilities, and expanding the libraries. 50% of the fee was due at the building permit receipt, and the remainder was due at the certificate of occupancy. Your role in this is to review the development agreement for consistency with the general plan and the downtown specific plan. Those consist... Our staff thinks that, believes the development agreement is consistent with the general plan. I've outlined those consistency findings in the staff report as well as the resolution. If you have any questions on those or you want me to go over those, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, staff recommends that you recommend to the City Council to adopt the impact or the early payment fee, DA. That concludes what I have to say.
Questions to the staff?
The total fee is on this one.
Correct.
But it wasn't on the other one. Didn't see it. Was it?
To be honest with you, give us a second, and Eric can check.
Was it? Okay. I may have missed it.
Ms. Landrigan.
This is for Mr. Hagani, who doesn't want to talk about this. My question is, the definition of parkland and open space is not defined.
There... I think Ms. Van Miden described that there is a definition in the general plan, as we have been referring to in the past, and we are, we think we need to revisit that. And you will be hearing about the various definitions as applicable to different parts of the city, consistent with the neighborhoods, as we bring in the community plans for you. But as it stands, we will be relying on the definitions that exist currently in the general plan.
So when this... This has already been approved, however.
Yes, that actually, the open space element and Parks and Open Space element, which is several years old.
No, no, I mean, this project...
The project has been approved. The project has been approved, yes.
The project has been approved, correct.
And so in that approval, it was determined that it met the city's requirements.
Correct, yes.
And definitions.
Yes, yes, according to... Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Thank you. No doubt. That's quite all right. Because I... We will be able to talk about this at some time, I hope. All right, that was my question. Following on Mr. Cyan's.
Thank you. Ms. Cyan, you have any more?
No. Okay.
Any more comments from the staff?
I don't have any more comments.
And I don't have any public cards, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'm ready for motion.
Can I move? Go ahead.
Sure, I'll move it. Based upon the Resolution Number 2011-01, isn't that the last one I sent? But it may be actually a different resolution. Mine is 01.
Mine is 01. Eric's, I believe, was 02.
Oh, all right.
So.
Okay. This one is for the project located at 300 North Central Avenue, Glendale. And I... The Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council approve the development agreement and all of the sections and notations as presented.
So seeking support?
Second.
Here, we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan.
Aye.
Yes, Cyan.
Aye.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye. With the vote of three to zero, statutory development agreement to implement the Parks and Library Development Impact Fee early payment option for 300 North Central Avenue, Legendary Tower project, has been recommended for adoption. Okay, next, we have 2011 Analysis of Impediments for Fair Housing and Fair Housing Plan. Mrs. Carrillo?
Well, just the description that we have under their agenda. "The City of Glendale Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice and Fair Housing Plan Assesses the Nature and Extent of Fair Housing Concerns and States How the City Will Act on Its Responsibility to Address Impediments and to Take Appropriate Actions to Overcome the Effects of Any Impediments to Fair Housing Choice." And tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to review and provide comments concerning the 2001 Analysis of Impediments and Fair Housing Plan to the City Council and Housing Authority. And the Planning Department did work with Moises Carrillo and his staff to start reviewing the analysis of impediments to fair housing, and what you're seeing today is a draft. And the idea is to allow the Planning Commission, because of your responsibility under the housing element, we wanted to make sure that you had a chance to take a look at this document when it was still in draft form and make a recommendation and comments for modifications as you see fit. And we also have Moises Carrillo here to answer questions concerning the document. You add?
Good evening, Chairman Lee, members of the Planning Commission, Moises Carrillo from Community Services and Parks. No, I don't want to add too much with staff was mentioning. We do have the consultant here to answer any questions you might have specifically on the draft Analysis of Impediments. Community Service and Parks and planning staff have been working together on this for a number of months to get the draft going and get the data and do all the public input. And we do plan on going to the City Council with comments in October 25, I believe, to get a final approval.
to get, to get a final approval. This is required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is why the CDBG section of the Parks Department is working on this. But it is a, certainly a, a general planning document that we like to certainly have comments from the planning commission and from staff. So, I'll, I'll bring up Veronica in case she has any comments or wants to give an overview of the, of the AI.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk before you about the AI. We call it the AI because it's just a lot easier than to say analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. As Moises mentioned, that this is required by HUD, and the AI really has to cover a variety of topics, particularly it, it looks at the market, private market and conditions, the real estate practices in Glendale. It looks at the lending industry, even though it recognizes that you don't have a whole lot of control over than the lending practice, but you should be aware of some of the issues that may surface in the lending market. It also looks at the policies, rules and regulations within the city of Glendale, what are the things that you may have to do in order to promote fair housing choice, and also look at the services that you provide in terms of fair housing. What we have looked at is all these sections, if they're different topics, and we find some, there are some potential issue areas and then recommend actions. For example, we heard something that was very interesting from the realtors. Homeowners associations are not typically aware of that they do have fair housing obligations as well. So, one of the recommendations that we added in this particular AI compared to your current one is to actually expand your outreach and, in terms of fair housing outreach and education to homeowners associations as well, because the board members and the rules and regulations they put in the CCNR may not actually be aware of, that they are aware of fair housing laws. So, those are some of the new things that we have noticed and that compared to your current AI. We also looked at, you know, advertisements, particularly rental advertisements that property owners use in, in order to solicit new tenants. Sometimes the language, they may be not be intentional, but they, they're not necessarily the best language that should be used in advertising. So, there should be some, you know, some additional monitoring in that area. So, there are some additional impediments that we added in this particular AI compared to your current one, but a lot of things relates to outreach and education and, but maybe expanding it to different groups that you normally do not think about, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I do realize that it is a relatively thick document. You may not have enough time to review it at this time, so.
Well, we read every page.
So, how often does something like this have to happen?
It's required to be done every five years and generally along the same timeframe as you do your consolidated plan. The whole idea is you, you look at what are the potential impediments in your, in your community, and then in doing your five-year consolidated plan, how you plan to spend your CDBG funds, you take that into consideration, what kind of things that you need to do in order to meet your obligation of furthering fair housing choice. And then annually, when you do your annual action plan of allocating annual funding, you budget appropriately to actually take implementation actions on an annual basis.
Ms. Landrigan?
Yes, I have several questions and a couple of comments. All of chapter one, the introduction, is inappropriate, is not numbered at all, it has every page B6, so you might want to fix that in your final.
Yeah, I noticed that it's, we do automatic cross-referencing and somehow that just generate a, a technical glitch, and we'll fix that definitely.
All right. And if you do put my name in there, please spell it right. No. On page 80 of the pages that are numbered, in the middle of the page, I'll wait till you get there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It says, "The inclusionary housing policy has several benefits. First, it directly targets the production of affordable housing, which the market is unlikely to produce without government intervention. Second, it promotes the creation of affordable housing within Glendale, in particular within the SFR CRPA. This helps promote infill development and all the benefits of such development. Finally, it helps Glendale address its own affordable housing needs rather than relying on other jurisdictions to meet that need." My question is, is nowhere even here and in chapter seven is that referenced, how this has performed in the city of Glendale, and I think that is a piece of information that is very important to include.
Okay.
Then, if we go to chapter seven, the progress since the previous AIs. In your earlier analysis here, you mentioned that seniors were not adequately accommodated. And yet, in the actual progress since previous AIs, there's no recommendations on how to resolve that omission that was brought out earlier in the report. And I think that we need to look at that as our community ages. How you, how you incorporate that is, I'm sure, better for you to decide than for me. The other one is on page 115.
Okay.
Which is, "The city will continue to provide rehabilitation assistance for owner and rental housing in the community." But then it says that it will ensure that information is provided on the city's website. Actually, I think I was a little disappointed in some of the responses here, because they don't really talk about what percentage the city has actually accomplished since the last one, and if, if what we have put into place is actually working, or we really need to look at it differently.
Okay.
That seems to be a section that's not heavily hit upon. And this is one where I see that's really, you know, it just kind of glosses over it and goes on to, you know, put this on the webpage.
You mean the responses to what the city has actually accomplished?
Right. Well, if the city is now providing rehabilitation assistance for owners and rental housing in the community, is it not being used? What percentage is being used? Why is it not? I mean, there's, there's not a lot of meat there. It's really not an in-depth response.
Yeah, we are, we're still working on, on the draft and some of the things that we, these are, this is particularly the part that we are still working with staff on, on some of the efforts being accomplished.
Yeah, I think it needs strengthening there. On the page 116, actually, I decided that was okay. It's on 117, I'm sorry. On page 117, it's where the seniors were brought back into play, where you say the city will consider amending the zoning code to permit senior housing by right, where high-density multifamily housing is permitted. But that was not included in some of the conclusions. So, I would like to see that further. I mean, I know that there's a lot here to put, to cross-reference, but that did not seem to make it into the final chapter.
Okay.
On page 118, you say, we're talking about accessibility here in the paragraph. It says, "There's a lack of accessible housing in the city for persons with disabilities." And then you talk about the city's efforts. And on the very last bullet, it says, "The city continued to expand services and facilities for emergency shelters, transitional shelters, and all of et cetera, other services that do not seem to really address people with disabilities." Does it mean, my question here, is that in the right place? Are you making these services accessible for people with disabilities?
Transitional housing, case management, supportive services, and also some of these services are primarily catered, not all of them, but some of them are catered towards persons with disabilities. So, when we talk about accessibility, it also, not just the physical ramps and all of that, but having the housing that is catered towards persons with disabilities. So, I think that may not be very clear in terms of how the intention is.
All right. And then, the next one too, you talk about segregation, and then you have, I guess my questions are that it's not really clear how the city is implementing these efforts. The efforts may be there, but.
We'll, we'll elaborate on how that correlates.
Some elaboration, thank you.
Sometimes it, it's clear for us planners and nerdy persons, but it's not.
Well, I might say we're doing it, but I think there needs to be something stronger. I think I may have hit on all the items that I didn't think were cross-referenced.
Okay.
Those are my comments, Mr. Chan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Landrigan?
It seemed like the outreach that was done was mostly in like south, south Glendale, is that right?
No, I think, for example, the survey is available to everybody as online and in multiple languages. And when we did the outreach workshop, the city actually randomly select, I think 4,000 addresses to mail out to, and so it's like random. But I think sometimes when it comes to issues, because a lot of your, your rental housing stock is in the southern part of Glendale, and, and housing issues tend to impact renters more, so you have more of that group come out than, than maybe broader parts of the city.
Right. It's the higher, so I guess the outreach meetings are, that's the reason why it was concentrated more in the south, right?
In terms of the, in terms of location.
Yeah. And in general, but in general with the surveys, I guess they're done randomly all over.
Right.
But you have a higher proportion in the south.
Of people coming, responding to it, because fair housing issues tend to impact tenants because they are ongoing, being subject to it. But as your own homeowners, you buy a home, then you may stay there for a long time and you may not have as much of the issues that, that a tenant or a renter would run into.
Yeah. I guess, what, what were some of the biggest differences you've seen in the profile since the last five years?
I think, you know, in demographically, you obviously have changed a little bit, but it's actually more diverse. You have a bigger Asian population than you have before, and that's part of the reason why this particular time when we do the survey, we included Korean language as part of the survey as well, because demographically you have more. I think it hasn't, you know, fair housing issues, what we see in terms of comments from residents, more would be, you know, they really are frustrated with the fact that there's not enough funding, and there's not enough affordable housing, and section eight takes a long time for them, you know, they, they put in the waiting list and, and it would be years before that they can, they can get assistance. So, there's a lot of frustrations that we see in that regard. We're not necessarily seeing in terms of profile, there is any particular difference in terms of fair housing issues. The trend of fair housing issues is regionally or even nationwide. It has changed from a long time ago, it would be more primarily based on race. Now, we are seeing more, including in your community, is based on disability and familial status, meaning whether people have children or not. And that, that has been a change. In the past, race and, and national origin tend to be more of an issue. Now, disability and familial status is an issue. And I think also what we, we have seen, like I mentioned before, some of your, and quite a bit of your condominiums are actually used as rentals as well. And, but when, when people are not aware of it, homeowners association not aware of it, they may have, you know, rules and regulations that are not necessarily consistent with fair housing laws. And so, some of the realtors are, you know, reminding us that fair housing outreach really do need to outreach to that group as well.
Can I ask you a question on that? So, you're saying that in the CCNRs, if a person rents out their condo, they probably don't rent it out through a property manager?
Right.
And so, that is where.
Sometimes, yeah.
The, the CCNRs may say that such and such, you can't have more than so many people in this thing.
Right.
And that would be in violation of somebody renting out their condo.
Right. And CCNRs, a lot of times, CCNRs were written many, many years ago, and they hardly have, nobody had ever looked at it or amended. I don't usually see, you know, homeowners association going back and amend their CCNRs. Now, if you have educated board members who are aware of fair housing laws, I shouldn't say educated board member, but board members who are educated about fair housing laws, they may know that you can't really enforce certain things in the CCNR, even though it's in there. I'll give you more personal experience, but not in Glendale, just in my own condo complex, small condo complex. We, we self-managed it. And the president once said that, well, we need to put a rule that no children can play in this area. And I have to tell her that, no, you cannot do that. We can say, no people can play in this area, but no, not no children. So, that, if you translate that kind of situation to similar homeowners associations, you may have situations where people, you know, unintentionally may be violating fair housing laws for that reason.
And now that we're on condos, when you started talking about that, you reminded me, I did have a question, because we have had the conversions, condo conversions and displacement problems that have occurred here. And you do recommend that we reduce the displacement aspects and impacts. Are you going to provide direction? Or are you just indicating that this is something that needs to be done, and then we will address how that affects our code?
I'm recommending that, you know, you take a look at it. On the other hand, you, you may want to look at it in a different time. Now, this particular recommendation, I think it was carried over from the previous AI. Now, the market has changed. Now, I would say five years ago, when the market was peak, you can see condo conversion just like that. Every other day, you'll probably get an application for condo conversion. But because of the market right now, condo conversion is not something that happens very often, so you may not have an immediate need to do anything. So, that, I think you, you may want to, you know, think about whether that is something that you want to do or you want to do now. I think the, a lot of these actions and recommendations here are something that you want to think about and whether you, you, you think is, you know, needed right now, because all of that requires some kind of administrative funding level that you, you may want to prioritize. Now, that may not be something that you want to prioritize right now, because there hasn't been a lot of conversion, but you may want to think about that in the future when conversion starts up again.
This may be it.
No, go ahead.
Question for you or, or maybe Ms. Van Muyden, that obviously, in the efforts of promoting fair housing, senior housing and affordable housing, I remember there was a developer that, I will not name names, but that our Glendale got famous for, because we had a lot of projects with that developer. Is that part of the, something that, do we have some safeguards that needs to be built into this thing, or is there something we have in place that's already, that we feel comfortable, that we examine, screen these developers in this type of projects, so that we will not have, you know, cases like that? I don't know. And how did that, you know, case affect?
I guess I'm not necessarily understanding why would working with that developer more have fair housing issues? Is, is it because?
Well, he was, I guess, that's, that's what I was asking, is that.
Some past practices.
Yeah, you know, obviously, I mean, he primarily developed, you know, the so-called housing and state-assisted projects.
Okay.
And whether, I, I'm not saying that it is our responsibility to really oversee all their operations, but their practice have actually affected.
Disregard.
Yeah, the, you know, city. And I guess what I'm asking is that, you know, should there be some sort of a safeguard or some sort of procedure? or some sort of procedure in that, you know, in order to get to our, you know, fair housing practices here, you know, do we need to build some, some sort of a safeguard in here? Or is there something that, do we already have that, that, you know?
You should already have that to some extent, but not all of it. Like if you are using home funds for affordable housing development, you are required to, the developer is required to do something called the affirmative fair marketing, that when they market the units available, whether for sale or for rent, they're supposed to follow a, an affirmative marketing process, that outreach to all groups so that it doesn't, you know, that certain groups doesn't get to it. And then they are also subject to fair housing requirements. But I think if it's not funded with home, then may, that fair market plan, fair marketing plan may not apply to the rest.
I don't think that's the question that I asked, yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe I understand your question, and that's in reference to a, for example, any developer that may be unfairly taking advantage of the available resources for affordable housing. And in a way, to the extent that the resources are not fairly used and maximally used and are abused by the developer, then that, those resources are wasted and the number of housing, affordable housing units that are produced are in effect less than they could have been. I believe the way to address that, and I think there is a way, a place to address that, would be to say that there, there would be tighter controls over the selection of developers so that the resources available for production of affordable housing are maximally used to the best benefit of the community, or some policies such that, and we are in fact developing those mechanisms.
So I'm asking, do we have a policy?
We are developing a policy, but if you would like to address it and memorialize it here, this would be an appropriate location, that you could put a general direction. And then there, the next place that in a planning document we could address it would be in our housing element, the next time we bring it up, we can address it further.
That's what I was.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Sanders understood the question. But I think also when it's being used for certain funding, there are, certain fundings require annual monitoring, but not all funding. So, so maybe that is something that the city wants to expand. If, again, home funds are subject to much more stringent requirements, so if you use home funds, it's supposed to, subject to annual monitoring of this project. But that requirement does not extend to other affordable housing funds. So you may want to consider extending that.
May I have one more?
Yes.
There are many recommendations in here that concern the zoning code and land use policy and changes to the codes that have not filled in the timelines yet. And so I'm curious, because I think that it's going to be certainly sort of an agenda timeline for us on how to proceed with this. Basically, the changes that are recommended for our codes and, you know, in accessibility, we have zoning code change here and zoning code change here. What is typically the process or the timeline one would take to do this, to make this compliant with the?
A lot of the changes, I think, is already in the city's housing element, kind of in working with this document, we kind of incorporate some of those recommendations into the AI. But we're still working on staff, like in terms of timing. Some of them may actually have been done, but it's, as an outside person, we don't want to be in the position to dictate that kind of timeline. So we don't, we do want to work with the planning staff to make sure certain things, if they've been done, when was it done? If they haven't been done, what could we, what would be an appropriate and feasible timeline to put in there, so. But there is not, this AI has, it's part of the federal requirement, but there's no regulation that governs, governs the AI. So it doesn't require that you must do something by a certain time. It's really locally what you feel is more critical, what you can accomplish with the funding and staffing that you have. And recognizing that you will never be able to achieve everything that you, you want to do and you can never, you know, eliminate all housing discrimination. So just kind of prioritizing what is most important to you.
Stoller?
And we have provided information to Moises that updates a lot of the information that was put in this plan. I mean, you're seeing the draft the same as we saw the draft, and so we've also made some changes throughout the document also.
So when will you recommend this draft? Is that coming back for, you know, final?
Well, I believe this is going directly to, to the council for action.
Oh, okay.
But our comments are included. And in terms of some of the housing element programs that we've identified, many of them have been adopted, but we do have some that we looked at doing last year. However they've been put off, we'll be doing them next year.
Any more questions? Don't send any public cards, so, cause of public hearing?
Do we have, do we?
Do we need an action or just recommendation? What do we need?
I believe you have a motion in your packet to provide, to forward your comments to the city council.
Okay. See it. Look at all the papers.
Okay. Anybody want to entertain a motion here?
Sure. I move that the Planning Commission has considered the analysis of impediments to fair housing and fair housing plan and commented, Hendricks, that the Planning Commission comments on this item be forwarded for city council and housing authority consideration.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a support.
Planning Commissioners Landrigan.
Aye.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye. The vote, three to zero, that 2011 analysis of impediments for fair housing and fair housing plan with commissioner comments is recommended to the city council. Next item is Greener Glendale Plan for Municipal Operations and Ms. Prudt.
Good evening, Chair Lee and Commissioners. My name is Cassandra Prudt. I'm a planning assistant in the planning division. And we've been working closely with Glendale Water and Power and all other departments in the city to develop this Greener Glendale Plan. Have a presentation here. So the Greener Glendale Plan is funded by a grant that Glendale Water and Power received from the Department of Energy called the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. And part of this money was allocated to develop a citywide energy efficiency and conservation plan, which we're calling the Greener Glendale Plan. The Community Development Department is ensuring that the city meets state legislative requirements to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So Community Development Department and Glendale Water and Power partnered to create the Greener Glendale Plan that would address energy efficiency, water conservation and greenhouse gas emission reductions. On November 9, 2010, city council adopted the United Nations Urban Environmental Accords. And what, and they adopted them to, as a framework for long-term sustainability efforts. So the UN Accords looks at seven topics of sustainability. And I just want to define the term sustainability. It means that we're looking at the environment, the economy and society in a way that ensures that we can sustain ourselves into the future. So the city council also adopted, oh, let me mention the seven topics. It's energy, water, waste, transportation, urban design, urban nature and environmental health. On that same day, city council adopted a resolution to address sustainability and climate So our first step was to assess our sustainability status and existing sustainability programs. We put this into a report, created a promotional brochure that we made available to the public, both online and in printed form. We, we made it available on the website. We distributed it at community events and put it at literature stations throughout the We're developing the Greener Glendale Plan in two separate standalone documents. One that addresses internal operations and one that addresses community activities. So addressing, addressing municipal operations in a standalone document allows us to inspect those activities that are within our direct operational control and to make effective policy decisions about them. The greenhouse gas emissions from municipal operations account for only 3% of the total community greenhouse gas emissions. So if we lumped our activities in a document with community activities, we wouldn't be able to look at what we're doing and make decisions about how we can improve those efforts. Also, Glendale is a complex municipality. We have our own utility, our own landfill, police and fire departments, and we want to be able to look at those in the document. We also want to highlight our existing sustainability programs. And one reason for this is that AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act mandates that cities reduce their greenhouse gas emissions to below 1990 levels. But the city's been implementing sustainability measures since before 1990, so we want to make that clear. These are just some of the things that we've done. As you can see, we've been introducing clean energy into our energy portfolio since the We did energy and water facility upgrades in the 90s and we've been continuing these efforts since then. We began introducing clean fuel into the fleet in the 70s, encouraging alternative transportation for our employees in the 90s. And the fleet is currently developing a green fleet policy. To date, 9% of the vehicle fleet is green, plus the CNG bus fleet. We installed the landfill gas collection system in the 80s and began using that gas for energy in the 90s. As you can see, we've been consistently increasing our recycling rate. And we also have a zero waste plan in the works. We've been working to preserve and enhance urban nature since the 1980s. As part of this initial inventory phase, we conducted a greenhouse gas emission and water consumption inventory. We're using this as a baseline for our reduction targets. So what we discovered is that due to existing departmental efforts, the facilities actually decreased their energy and water consumption between the two years that we inventoried, which was 2004 and 2009. However, the city did increase its service to the public through areas such as the fleet and by opening the new police building. So overall, the greenhouse gas emissions increased by 3%. As you can see on the graph on the left, if we don't take any action, those emissions will continue to increase. So the plan proposes greenhouse gas reduction targets of 8% by 2020 and 13% by 2035. We consider these feasible targets, and they would also bring us in line with regional efforts by Southern California Association of Governments. However, if the council chose to adopt more ambitious targets, the plan does have measures that we could pursue that would help us meet those targets. The graph on the right indicates that the number one, through the city's already completed, in progress or planned and funded programs and projects, we could meet 77% of our 2020 target. The remaining of our 2020 target would need to be met through programs that are not funded, but they wouldn't require significant additional funding, they would mostly require staff time. The 2035 target or any more ambitious target, if it was adopted, would need to be met through programs that are not funded. The Greener Glendale Plan looks at sustainability through the seven topics from the urban nation, the United Nations Urban Environmental Accords, and it shows how implementing measures within each of those topic areas will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Just waiting for the slide to change. Here we go. This is a list, this is just a sample list of some of the projects that the city's either completed, has in progress or has planned and funded. These are part of that 77% I mentioned. So the second document that covers community activities, that's in progress, we've completed the greenhouse gas emission and water consumption inventories. We conducted a variety of community outreach, including working with an email interest list of 100 people. We conducted a community workshop. We attended various community events and meetings. And we're currently working with businesses, hospitals and schools to include their conservation efforts within the plan. A key finding of community outreach was that the city has a lot of information and programs available that the community is interested in and wants to see expanded, particularly education outreach and promotions such as awards, a website and demonstration sites. So the timeline for this document is to be made available for public review in December, presented to GWP and Planning Commission in January, and to city council in February. As a note, we took this to GWP commission a few days ago, and they directed us to provide a little bit more information on the list of projects on page nine and 10, particularly the funding sources, in case city council wanted to consider that in light of the budget situation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Hussein, go first.
Is, is there any effort to engage, and since this is a municipal operations, is there an effort to engage the employees work at the city on the Greener Glendale? Or is outreach just primarily community?
We took ideas from the community workshop and put them into the plan. Then we worked closely with all other, other departments to get ideas on things that, you know, weren't presented at the community workshop or things we hadn't thought of. We, for the, when we inventoried the emissions from community, from employee commutes, we, we surveyed the employees in the city. So they were involved in that process. As far as, in terms of developing the plan, we just worked with staff in the city. But one of the recommendations is to work with employees to encourage energy and water conservation. That's one of the recommended measures in the plan.
And then what are like the ways forward on how to engage the employees going forward?
Well, in the, there is an appendix that has a variety of ideas for sustainability However, the sustainability outreach measure is not a funded, that's not funded, so it's not currently being done necessarily.
Page 83.
Sorry?
That's where it is, on page 83.
Oh, yeah. The, the sustainability outreach examples are on page 83. I mentioned earlier that we've already accomplished energy and water savings in the facilities, so obviously there's been efforts there that have definitely involved employees.
Are there any incentive, I didn't see them in here incentivized elements where if employees come up with cost-saving suggestions?
I believe there's a mention of something like that in this appendix F, encouraging employees to come up with ideas, but there's no incentive per se. Although, this is just a list of examples, so we could definitely include that.
Well, if, if, if an employee can come up with a plan that saves the city a million dollars and there's an incentive, that there's a bonus in there, I mean, that, I see that as a win-win situation. A lot of times, in, all the employees are agreeing with me.
Okay.
But no, I really do. I really do see that, you know, a lot of times if you have the hands-on situation and you are encouraged to help the city save money, that you kind of, it's a shared benefit. I think that's a really great program, especially when you're looking at how to improve your operations and to reduce waste. Could be very, very beneficial to both the employees and the.
Or I guess like some pilot projects that employees have ideas. I mean, like I think one of the. I mean, I think one of the things would be kind of interesting to have like a bike share system available for employees to use bikes maybe during lunch, so they don't have to drive if they want to go somewhere.
And I was thinking of Zipcar. Zipcar's this fabulous, you know, you have rental cars, and the city would have access to them, and the employees would, and that way you wouldn't have to maintain the fleet Zipcar does. And then it even could be used for, you know, the community on the weekend so that you could have a shared benefit. I mean, I was looking at that in the transportation section.
Just as far as actually the bike sharing goes, there's a really easy way, even things like that, that could be done. I know like the police department has, it gets a lot of bikes, and then they just sell them for really cheap at the end of the year. So I mean, something like that, if like this is internalized in something like this where it looks at things like, you know, where it can be done cheaply, and you could keep those bikes and just make it available to employees, that's like a part of, I guess, the Greener Glendale. Although it's hard to, I guess, when you do the inventory, I don't know exactly how you calculate all of that as part of it. So I'm not sure how you show that as far as like meeting your goals.
Well, you would have reduced traffic impacts on your cars, you'd have reduced repairs, you'd have, I mean, seriously, I think that's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
And reduced emissions.
We may not be able to actually quantify the amount of emissions that would be reduced, but it certainly, in fact, we have a number of programs that are listed where we can't quantify it.
Correct.
But that's definitely something that is absolutely forwarding sustainability goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a few. I appreciate you reprinting the cover with correct spelling. But I actually looked at this online, and I noted some color elements that you might find interesting. On page four, the two pie charts, as we are looking at them in black, and other shades of black. The actual landfill and transit fleet have been reversed, and it would be really helpful since they are comparison, that they all have the same color in both of them.
Okay.
So I think that should be fixed. On page 10, I'm trying to find page 10, here I earmarked it. You have, I think it's really interesting that it deals with farmer's market, but it would be also interesting, I visited Kerrville, Texas, and it's a great place to visit and to not live, but they had a marvelous, their hospital had a garden where their cafeteria actually provided fresh food from that garden. And there are probably places that we already have gardeners who are tending some of the areas that are in the city that are close by City Hall, that there could be a way that in some of those areas that there could be a shared bounty of gardening in some of the city parks for the city employees in a participatory thing. That would be very interesting. It was really lovely, and, you know, it just seemed like a very nice way to deal with using our land in an agreeable way, in a way that it used to be. On number 19, page 19, and I know we didn't get it passed in the green or building standards, but it was something that I think is really simple to do and actually really important is to do a double plumbing of homes. And I would hope that we might want to not just say that we've already adopted a green building standard, but there are some building standards that would be very easily implemented and should be pursued and looked at. And one of them is to reuse, the double plumbing is to reuse gray water within a house. And that would be far easier than expanding the city's infrastructure to have more recycled water. You recycle it in C2, which is a way of being sustainable that's really smart. So that might be an interesting way to look at that. If that happened here, if we were reusing gray water here in the City Hall and other areas as opposed to just, the infrastructure is very costly. 25, page 25, I know that you specifically excluded any costs outside of the city that we don't have control over. However, the transportation of water, the energy use of getting water to the city is 19% of the cost. It's huge. And actually, maybe higher. I think that that's the correct number. But the more that we do use recycled water within the city or within City Hall, we reduce that energy cost too, because we don't have to portage all that water. On page 26, large air conditioning condensation units actually release lots of pure water, and that water can be captured and used. And that's a very simple, you know, way to deal with some of the functions of the mechanized elements there. Looking at ways to capture energy and capture, look at opportunities like that would be nice to include in here. Page 33, I do have a question, not just a comment. So we have two different departments planting trees. Public Works only plants indigenous trees, and Community Services plants any kind of trees?
Public Works plants both. They have a budget for regular trees, and they have another budget for indigenous trees.
And they are street tree planting, or do they plant in other places?
Public Works plants the street trees.
All right. And Parks and Community Services, that's parkland, and anything else?
Not that I know of.
That was just a question.
Yeah.
All right. And on page 40, now this brings me back to the earlier comment I made to Mr. Higami about our parks and recreation, because we have a low-impact development ordinance, but it was actually implemented before many of the new EPA standards and many of the total daily load requirements. And I really think that that is an ordinance we need to look at for two reasons. One is that if we're looking at allowing open space to meet the definition of parkland, the difference between the two of them is open space does not have to be, you know, be pervious, it can be impervious. And the difference in how it responds to us meeting sustainability goals is huge. And so I really think that if we are going to look at that definition, I think they have to have beneficial functions if we're going to allow those, have to look at all the beneficial natural systems that they support in weighing those two options. And I see that specifically here in our water and the low impact. And we do need the low-impact development ordinance to become a high priority, I think, for many reasons. And that would be on page 46, that we could incorporate into our transportation, and we have not done it here, which is, you know, an opportunity that I really think we need to see, and to incorporate our green infrastructure and our low-impact development into our transportation design and street improvements. And that is where I see there's a little bit of, you know, siloing here, that we need to look at how many of, we look at how natural systems work within artificial systems, and that's the best way to be sustainable here. So that was really overlooked here. I think this is really an amazing piece of work here. I was really impressed. I'm excited, I'm really excited about it. And I do like how we have on EH3, which is page 49, we talk about the use of locally grown organic food. We probably need to define locally grown, so maybe there is a radius there, what we would consider, what is the, how is the cost-benefit? Is it 100 miles? Is it 50 miles? Is it next door? Is it across the street? But those are, I mean, I think this is, you've done a great job, and bravo. I think it's pretty exciting.
If I may ask Ms. Landrigan, if you have written notes on these pages that we took, we followed everything you said, but these were very helpful comments, if you could pass on the notes to Cassandra, that would be good. If not, that's okay too.
You could probably, I don't know if you can read them. Sure.
Mr. Higami, you have any questions? Yeah, you know, you mentioned a lot of the state stuff, I guess it's the state mandates, but it's interesting that it's like a federal grant that was given. Was there anything specifically that the federal was asking for? Because I didn't see any mention of like Department of Energy, or did they have the recommendations of how this was laid out, the report, I guess?
Well, the grant came from the 2009, I believe, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds, and on the Department of Energy website, it has a brief description of the grant and what it's to be used for. And it basically says, "Energy Efficiency and Conservation," and it mentions climate change and that it's being done in order to address climate change.
So they pretty much just left it really kind of open, do what you want? It's pretty cool. And then for as far as measurements or anything like that, they've kind of left it open as well, so you had to go by the state, with the state kind of meeting the state's goals.
When it came to greenhouse gas emission reductions, we're following the state regulations on that. And then as far as federal regulation, it was just whatever was required for the grant, which was fairly open, and it just needed to address energy efficiency and conservation.
I mean, I really liked the plan, and I'm excited to see, I was at the community outreach meeting, and that was really cool. I hope we do maybe like more, if we're going to be, I don't know if there's a plan to do another one, which showing the plan like this, which would be maybe a good idea to get the community input. But I thought that was really cool, and I would kind of like the idea of having maybe a section where it says all the community inputs too, of what the community has said. And then also like a process where like these pilot projects would be interesting too, on how to initiate and how to bring forward on that. I think that's one thing I really liked about the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, that they kind of emphasized that as well, to encourage to something like that happening. And maybe even like some type of committee, establishing some type of committee, which the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan was also emphasizing, I think. That's where you guys had talked about, or something like that, establishing something like that.
And then in the, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Higami. Yes, with regard to establishing a committee similar to the Safe and Healthy Streets, what we are actually doing in terms of establishing a committee, as you know, Ms. Dotler and Mr. Loomis are in charge of doing the general plan update through the community plans, and each time we start those, we have a committee that represents the whole community for which we're doing a general plan update. And we're using that same mechanism, that same group, to include discussions on the Safe and Healthy Streets, and we will also be including the Greener Glendale Plan as part of the discussion every time we do a community plan update. So that's already in the works.
And just to answer something you mentioned earlier about including the comments we got from the community, we were going to have an extensive detailed record of that in the second document for community activities.
Okay.
But we can include that in here too.
Okay.
I have a few comments. You know, I looked at some of the implementation projects and so on. You know, this is a great plan, but I feel that, you know, I think there could be a more aggressive plan, and not on a just smaller scale, but actually city-wide scale. I'm referring to like LED lighting projects that you mentioned, some of the exit signs and so on. But I know that GWP is reviewing some of the streetlights. That's, and you know, I guess that's on this street here, I guess there's a, I'd like to see a long-range plan as to what, you know, what the plan is to convert, you know, a lot of this streetlights into, because there's a tremendous benefit to having the LED streetlights, as well as LED lighting in the municipal buildings and promoting LED lights. Obviously, the energy savings that you get from that will give you a lot of green, you know, carbon points there. And also, looking at the transportation, I do not see any aggressive plan really going, or utilizing, or going after the electric car and, you know, Commissioner Landrigan mentioned Zipcars. You know, many cities are now adopting usage of EVs, and these EVs technology is such that now these cars go 200, 300 miles, you know, per charge. And, you know, I'd like to see also a long-range plan where as to, you know, our city utilizing more of these EVs. And when you have EVs, and also there's a commercial EVs that's out there that, you know, coming out LEAF and Vault and so on. And City of Chicago and San Francisco, Pennsylvania has already installed a grid of fast chargers versus, you know, long chargers and so on to accommodate some of the EV, to promote usage of the EVs. I'd like to see City of Glendale be one of the first cities in the West Coast to, you know, to have infrastructure ready for, you know, EVs and promote citizens to use, you know, use EVs and, you know, give them more incentive to really, there are some state incentives and so on that you can't drive in, I guess, the diamond lane and so on, and some of the parking incentives and so on. But I'd like to see City of Glendale be a little bit more aggressive in promoting, you know, doing that. And I guess the last thing is that, I guess, your alternative energy goal of 33%, I don't know what that consists of, but I, you know, think the, California is one of the, or United States is one of the last places where we're giving still, we're giving out, you know, rebates on solar energy. So I'd like to see City of Glendale, at least from the municipality side, utilizing more of the solar power while there's a rebate program available from the federal government.
Now that you mentioned the aggressive stuff, it made me, remind me of like Santa Monica's loose, their land use circulation element, which was really kind of a very aggressive document as far as sustainability-wise as well. And they went off with the goal of no net new car trips, which is really interesting, this concept. I guess my question is like, how do we, I know we're at, definitely at the beginning stages, but like how do we get up to that point where, and this may be something like Mr. Higami, maybe he has some plans for that? And like, how do we get to the point where they're at? You know, where we can be as aggressive and things like that?
Well, it's questionable that they're there really, because we know that they have adopted the zero net increase in trips, and I believe that the city is wondering how to backtrack that as it is, because, you know, shut down development. And so we're going there by taking these steps and similar steps, and by having the Safe and Healthy Streets and a master, we have to fill in the gap from what we've missed in the missed in the city in terms of a much more comprehensive approach to mobility, switching from moving cars to moving people. We still have not accomplished that. And that's really where we're focusing on, that we focus our mobility on moving people rather than moving vehicles. And once we do that, and we're doing that as part of the general plan update effort, and then we can put in the price of programs and the measures that will get us there. We still have some catching up to do.
And I understand this is the municipal operations we're doing, but since the, I know Bag Master Plan is happening at the same time, is there any cooperation as far as with their plan and with this Greener Glendale Plan happening to match up? Because that's what I think was really interesting with the Santa Monica loose, really emphasizes that, so all of those other plans are, it plays a real integral part because of this underlying mission that they have, vision that they have.
Well, I think Ms. Dotler is nodding, because one of the, one of the ideas that we have is that the general plan that is being produced right now will become the master document that covers most policies and includes all of these different ideas that connect the measures that the city is taking on in terms of measuring its own performance over time into the general plan. So, that is our approach, that I think the document that this commission will be forcing seeing over will be hopefully covering all of the policies that the city council is considering under one document. We're trying to come up with an integrated way that it does not become a very cumbersome document, that it's easy to understand and approachable and accessible. And that's kind of, I think that's the genius of what our planning staff is doing in terms of producing something that's like that and covers all of the bases without really being too sanctimonious or pontificating to, and trying to tell people what to do in that direct way.
Ms. Landrigan.
Well, I love Chairman Lee's recommendation of incentives for EVs. One of the things that used to be incentivized for probably just Priuses, but for the hybrids was no charge for parking. And that is something a city has control over, so that if EVs are purchased and used in Glendale, the city could take in their transportation stance that, you know, electric vehicles would not have to pay a parking fee if they parked in the city. And it's a minor nod to it, but I mean, it is something that we as a city can do. This is really municipally focused at the time. He also mentioned City of Chicago where I actually was this weekend, it was lovely weather, sorry you weren't there, 60 degrees, great shopping. But they also have a huge amount of green roofs and we don't have green roofs mentioned in here. And that is something that in any new city development, which should be considered, other, you know, technologies that are both, you know, nature-oriented as that. And I didn't think I saw it in there, but, you know, I had a lot to read, Cassandra, so I could have missed it. Did you, do you have it in there?
We did have some discussion about green roofs. However, I think you might be correct that there isn't, that isn't noted in the plan, because I can't think off the top of my head exactly where it is.
Okay. I just thought that it might be, you know, green roofs not only provide, you know, a wildlife habitat, but they're great insulators and they're, they've been around for years. So, it might be something for us to look at.
Include that.
Some cities, maybe not here, but, you know, I saw in Korea, because we lack a lot of water, so there's a lot of water shortage. And what they've done is that they were reclaiming some of the rainwater. And I don't know if that was something that was addressed, you know, because, you know, we do time to time run into, you know, water shortages and as Commissioner Landrigan mentioned, that there's a cost in bringing the water here. So, for, you know, lawn sprinkling and other usages, I think we can also do that. So, actually, our sister city, Kowloon, is doing extensive study on the rainwater recycling and capture of rainwater. So, he is visiting us in two weeks, so you might want to talk to him and ask him a few questions.
It is, there is some discussion of that in, I think it's-
Is it in water?
Yes. In the section that talks about low-impact development, it's one of the, I think, WT4C, explore opportunities to install rain gardens, rainwater capture, biofiltration applications, bioswells.
Any more comments, questions? Any comments, additional comments from the staff? I'm ready.
Okay. Go ahead. I'll move that the commission hereby recommends the City Council adopt the Greener Glendale Plan for municipal operations.
With the comments?
With comments as given by the commission.
Thinking for-
Second.
Okay. Motion and support. The call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan?
Aye.
Yes, Ayen?
Aye.
Jefferson Lee?
Aye, with a vote of 3 to 0. Greener Glendale Plan for Municipal Operations, the planning commission is recommending this adoption to the City Council. Planning given updates.
We don't have any updates right now.
Any comments from Commissioners?
No, that was a lot of reading material.
I will not be here, or it was October 3rd?
October the 5th.
Yeah, okay, October 5th meeting, I'll be in Mexico on a medical mission. I'm not a doctor, but I'll be, I'll be going over there to restore eyesight with eye doctors.
Oh, cool.
So, have fun and I'll see you, I guess, in a special meeting.
We'll fight over who becomes chairman.
I would like to, since you're not going to be here, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Yussain be our acting chair.
Okay.
Can we vote on that?
Mr. Yussain?
Can we do that kind of vote here? I mean, it stops us from fighting over, you know how we are.
You are volunteer, so you get to go.
Well, I guess we'll do it at the next meeting.
What you need to do, you need to just volunteer.
I think our attorney is going to tell us whether we can do that or not.
You can do that or the gavel can be passed and the person who, to whom the gavel is passed must just accept that and take on that role, so.
You mean now?
You could, you could do that now for purposes, or you could wait and have the decision made later and that you could vote on.
No, actually, while we're at it, I mean, it's not a big deal, but because we will spend probably five, 10 minutes, you know, going over it next time. Why don't we do that?
I do. I shall move, I move that Mr. Yussain will be the chair.
And Simon Lee, here's the gavel for next meeting.
Thank you.
It's done.
All right. So noted. I move adjournment, Mr. Chair.
So, adjourn.